G four oh four, G four oh five, G four oh six, L sixteen, L seventeen, L eighteen, L nineteen, L twenty, L twenty-one, L twenty-two, L twenty-three, L twenty-four, L twenty-five, R two oh eight, R two oh nine, R two ten. Do the payroll separate.
Yes, okay, thank you. I would accept, um, oh, Mr. Goodness, it just went out of my head. A motion. Sorry. Mr. Hayes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, approve the out-of-state field trip, and approve the warrants as stated by Superintendent Ben.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mrs. Bonnich. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, Linda? Thank you.
Requesting approval of payroll ten twenty-six, eleven nine, and eleven twenty-two.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
I make a motion that we approve the payroll as stated by Superintendent Ben.
Okay, do we have a second? Mrs. Bonnich? Thank you. All those in favor? Unanimous, Linda?
No.
One abstention.
One abstention, I'm sorry.
There's a student report here.
Okay. Hello, we have our student representative tonight. Thank you.
Okay, so, the winter-
Can you introduce yourself again?
I'm Michaela Dambrosio. I'm a senior. The winter sports season started last week, and games are starting this week, and we had a track meet early in the week, and tonight's the first hockey game, and Friday's the basketball games. The girls' basketball team is going to Disney this year over the winter vacation for a basketball tournament, and the Strings Holiday Concert was on Tuesday of last week, and Chorus has their concert tomorrow night. The Ambassador Club is raising money again this year to help a family in need for presents and gifts for their child this holiday season. DECA has their first competition tomorrow in Chelmsford. The annual Mr. and Miss WHS competition was held earlier this month, and Mike Semenelli and Sarah Luz were crowned the winners. Model UN has a very successful event at St. John's Prep this past weekend, working with Internet safety, creation of a Palestinian state, and the issue of human rights violations. And all the students are excited for the 10-day winter vacation coming up, and also for the new school being approved, as we get to see the new school for us and for the younger students.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you, Michaela. We can already see that our students are engaged in global learning with that variety in your report. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay, our next item of business would be the superintendent's report.
Two items in the report. We had a resignation. One of our security monitors at the high school got a wonderful opportunity, so he has left us. We're advertising for that position. And just for your files and bedtime reading, I have enclosed the end-of-the-year report that we had to submit to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Again, kudos to our Director of Administration in Finance, Paul Ruggiero. He does a phenomenal job, and this is not an easy report. So happy reading.
I believe this is one of the most difficult reports that you have to put in all year, Mr. Ruggiero, so we truly appreciate your hard work and your efforts on this. Does anyone have any questions on this at this point? Oh. We love that report. Thank you. Okay. Our next item is new business, superintendent's preliminary FY 2013 budget.
I'd like to acknowledge, most of my leadership team is here in the audience this evening, and thank them for all coming. We have a PowerPoint presentation, so hey, Evan, ask you to-
Yep.
Maybe should we do the first slide?
Oh.
Thanks. This is, includes most of the requests of all of the principals and heads of departments. In the next couple of weeks, Paul and I will be meeting with the town manager to figure out a number that we can agree on, so I don't want anyone to be astonished or say we're looking for a 5.1% increase, because that's what you're going to see at the end. That is not what we're going to end up with. Wilmington prides itself on the value we place on public education. We strive to provide the highest quality educational experience for the children of Wilmington, and to ensure that they have everything they need to succeed in the classroom, the art studios, the stage, and on the ball fields. As we approach this budget cycle, districts across the country are struggling to find ways to better prepare our children for the ever-flattening global society that defines our world today. As a result of this struggle, it is no surprise that words like innovation and restructuring are now being used to describe what is needed in public education as we progress further into the 21st century. First and foremost, as teachers, our task is not to fill students with facts through a series of rote memorization and regurgitation over the course of 12 years. It is not our place to present historical fact, mathematical equations, or grammatical regulations, ignoring human endeavor and irregularity to meet a standard or to conform to a multiple-choice test. Teachers have an obligation to create students of integrity, who will enter the adult world as thinkers. Our students should leave our classrooms better people, willing and able to create real change in the world. Collaboration, technology, personal reflection must be combined with new methodology and standard-driven curriculum to create a problem-based inquiry-learning environment. Our job in Wilmington is to create thinkers, leaders, and problem solvers. As educators, our responsibility is to stay ahead of the digital natives who enter our classrooms. Students must develop critical thinking, learning, and study skills that take them beyond the classroom. Creating a new learning environment will produce more intelligent people. More intelligent people can stimulate industry and innovation, drive the economy, and change the world. Only through hard work and risk-taking are such goals possible. A school system budget is more than a group of numbers. It is a statement about our philosophy of what we believe in. Thomas Armstrong wrote, "The quantification of developing the means and the capacity to facilitate human development with respect for each student's particular style and rate of learning, as well as an appreciation for the varied interests, aspirations, capacities, obstacles, temperaments, and backgrounds that serve as a framework within each child, should be what a school budget represents." We, as teachers, need to go beyond the concept of student collaboration being constrained by the walls of our schools. Students need to be enabled to collaborate across school districts, states, and even countries. The images that we hope to produce are classrooms where students are working together across the world, either by communicating with Skype, utilizing Google Docs, learning in real-time, using technology to create and synthesize information. Sir Kenneth Robinson recently said that we have to change the metaphor as education, from an industrial model to an agricultural model. Students need to be facilitators, be facilitators, excuse me, with a learning environment that encourages organic growth as an individual. He also went on to say that students need to develop 21st-century skills through the curriculum. Something that we will be delving deeply into this year is the common core standards, making sure that all of our students become 21st-century learners. You've heard me talk about the essentials of a 21st-century education. They include critical and creative problem-solving, collaboration, teaching students, initiative and entrepreneurship, effective oral and written communication. They need to be able to access and analyze information, and to me, most importantly, we need to make sure that we enable their curiosity and imagination. In preparing this budget for you this evening, we made some assumptions. How do we ensure that our children are equipped with the tools to be independent thinkers, as well as have the communicative, social, and work skills to be team players, whether here, at home, or abroad? We realize that national and regional growth in jobs and spending will be slow over the next couple of years, and we continue to see the current level of service, we continue to retain the current level of services, understanding that the school committee will consider equal-cost substitutions, which I'm going to talk about later. That's my addition by subtraction. We want to ensure our legal mandates are met, professional staffing guidelines are met, and continue to identify and plan alternatives that will provide services in a more cost-effective We need to maintain capital assets in order to support the instructional program, protect the physical assets of the town of Wilmington, ensure the health and safety of our students. We're working with the town manager on a long-term capital plan. We are hoping to come before you in January with a list of major projects, including window replacements at two of the other schools, and possibly some roof replacements. The green repair program, we were fortunate to get a grant in to do all of the windows at Shashin. The MSBA has come out with an application for, it's called Accelerated Program, and I did speak with them the other day and asked if we could put in for more, the window projects under that, and the deadline's December 29th, but I promised I'd lock myself in a room one day and write the grants if the town manager agreed. So we will be coming back to you with some long-term capital plans as well. We've also talked to the town manager about possibly blitzing the elementary schools one year at a time as far as painting, because they all could use a nice new coat of paint inside. And it's clearly, if you go over to Shashin, you see the beautiful windows, sort of points out the fact that we could use a paint job. Another area that we need to seriously look at, believe it or not, is our middle school. It is 12 years old, and things are starting to wear out their lifetime, including, for example, clocks. The clock system that was purchased, the Principal Nick Miniman is replacing 10 to 15 clocks a year. They're $250 apiece, and it doesn't make sense to be putting that kind of money into a system. So we'll be looking at that down the road, as well as new telephone systems for all the schools. So those are long-range plans for capital. We also need to track the elementary and middle school enrollment, because it's beginning to decline, and that could impact staffing levels. And continue to utilize the revolving fund revenues to supplement the town's appropriation. We do that, and Mr. Harrison does an outstanding job of raising funds that, because of the wonderful teams that we have bringing in money at the gate, so that we can provide the athletic programs that we do. And many of the sports teams in town have truly supported the athletic program. If we did not have that, we would not have the athletic program that we have today. So the challenge in the community today is the same as in every other community. How do you provide high-quality services that our residents expect, and yet keep the numbers down? For the last budget assumptions, we have not received any more federal job funds, grants, this year. Remember, our ARA funds are all used up, so we will have to look at what those funds covered and absorb them in the budget. We also want to observe your school committee pupil-teacher ratio guidelines, and account for the number and complexity of services. Students requiring special ed services continues to increase, and we really need to take a look at that. So these are the budget risks. We don't know what Chapter 70 revenues are going to be this year. We still, we will always have inadequate funds for equipment replacement throughout the district. Our leave-of-absent funds are inadequately funded, based on our current trends, and we're thrilled to see so many young teachers having babies, but it's very hard to predict that line item, and we keep going over it. The federal job funds no longer available. We're using circuit breaker funds more to supplement the budget. Salary savings this year from staff turnover is minimal. We have just a small number of retired, announced retirees this year. And over the years, we've been reducing the principals' instructional supplies accounts just in order to keep the increase low. And last, reduction of state and federal grant funds. So what will this budget fund? It will ensure our mandates around English language learners. It will fund all contractual requirements, including utilities, union contracts, and transportation contracts. And this year, we have to go out for a new transportation contract, so we're taking that. Usually, that means it's going to go out, so we're taking that into consideration. We continue to look for cost-effective ways to do things and build more in-house programs, i.e., some of our special ed programs have certainly saved the district hundreds of thousands of dollars. Want to maintain the current staffing levels that you prefer. Continue the virtual classrooms at the high school. We want to, at last year, you had allowed us to add .5 literacy coaches at each of the primary schools. We'd like to increase that to 1.0 at each of the schools. In last year's budget, you also agreed to appoint five strings teachers, and we could not find one. I think it has to do with the fact that it's not full-time, so we would like to have an additional .5 strings so that we can hire someone. And actually, I, because we did not utilize the funds the first half of the year, we're advertising now for a 1.0 to see if we can get someone on board, because it's critical that that group has another instructor with them. We continue to support this very successful full-day kindergarten program, and when we first implemented the full-day kindergarten program, the kindergarten grant was about $60,000 more than it is today. So we have had to absorb those costs in our operating budget. We don't know what the numbers will be this year, but you can be sure that at the federal and state level, the numbers, the grants numbers are going down instead of up. And continue to provide early intervention at the kindergarten level with the addition of the reading supports is what we are hoping this budget will do. In addition, support an additional .5 guidance counselor at the middle school level to deal with social-emotional issues of the student population. We're finding that that age group is really hurting. It's the best way to describe it, and we really need someone on board who can specifically deal with the social-emotional issues of the middle school students. There's a lot of students who are having issues outside of school, but where they're with us so many hours of the day, the problems come into the school, and we need to provide them, I think, a haven and support. Want to continue technology initiatives, continue to support our staff with strong professional development, support the beginning of a new strategic plan, and increase the high school library budget by $10,000 in order to respond to the deficits highlighted in the NEASC report. We live in a changing world, a world in which well-educated citizens will be in greater demand at every level of society. We need to expand, not narrow, our curriculum to ensure that all our students have a better understanding of the world, nor to achieve the goal of enhancing understanding and appreciation of our global society. The curriculum should be enriched, not depleted. Teachers who know a lot about teaching and learning, who work in environments that allow them to allow students, to know students well are the critical elements of successful learning, and we really need to provide professional development and support for our teachers. They do yeoman's work. So hopefully, this budget is helping us to prepare students for their future, not our Today's students will be citizens and leaders of the 21st century, heirs to a world that grows smaller and more interconnected every day. It is our responsibility to educate, prepare, and inspire all students to achieve their full potential as lifelong learners, thinkers, and productive contributors to our global society. Just want to show you a vision for 21st-century teaching.
Adapting to the world, teachers digitally empower diverse learners to connect, communicate, collaborate, and create in an interactive, technology-rich environment.
Thank you, Neil. So lastly, we need to invest in technology, which I will talk about later on in the presentation. Our budget, projected enrollment next year is 30 less students than this year. So the budget breakdown, where do we get the funds? We get them from, next, Chapter 70, state aid, local contribution, and grant, outside Preliminary staffing requests, the .5 guidance counselor. The literacy coaches for the Woburn Street in Shashin, district-wide strings instructor, and we need to add additional ed assistant at Shashin in one of the classrooms. Our preliminary non-salary changes are in sped tuitions and expenses, computer leases, instructional technology, curriculum and supplies, textbooks, equipment and furniture, and transportation. So what does this all mean? We're looking for a total increase of $1.7 million in this preliminary budget, which would bring us to $33,2576. That's a 5.51% increase. We realize, I just want to remind everyone, last year at this time, when I came to you, we were looking at a 5.24 increase, and we managed to come back to you with all that we wanted in a, with less of an increase. So that's the preliminary request. It breaks down to $1.4 million increase in salaries. That includes step raises, all contractual, for all contracts, and non-salary increase is $311,000. I just wanted to point out, because we're always talking about state mandates, but the following two slides are all, and it doesn't contain the entire list, but it refers to mandates from the state and federal government that are unfunded, that we're required to do. That includes no child left behind, and MCAS testing, the homeless students, ELL training, document translation services, crisis prevention training, restraint training, preschool requirements from the early ed and care, all the SIMs, EPIMS, and SCS data that the state now requires, 504 plans, RIT responses to intervention, implementation of bully prevention programs, curriculum revision. These are all mandates by the state or federal government, and yet we've not received a single penny for them. So next steps, this is my addition by subtraction, these are things that I'd like to, hoping to do. That video that you saw this evening was an attempt to get you thinking about how we need to infuse more technology into all of the buildings. We need to, we have teachers requesting all kinds of equipment every day, and we can't afford it all. So we're looking to first focus on the middle school, convert it to wireless, and purchase a couple of, probably iPads, laptops, I'm not sure, we're going to talk with the teachers about it, so that they can have portable computers, so that when the school was built, there were five computers in every, student computers in every classroom. Of course, we couldn't afford to replace all of them. This will give teachers an opportunity to take five, set up a classroom, five computer station with five computers or iPads, and it will give them more flexibility, and will bring them, quote, "into the 21st century." We're hoping to do this with a capital article, so you'll be hearing more about that in January. And also, in that article, we would like to make sure that every elementary classroom has a projector. We still have classrooms that are without projectors in the system. Secondly, I think it's important for us to start thinking about moving to a K-12 STEM coordinator and a K-12 reading English Language Arts coordinator. We, right now, have a reading program going on at the middle school, but no one's really in charge of it. We have a mandate, I think, from the world about improving our science and technology and engineering skills, and yet we don't have anyone leading the charge. So I'm looking to see if I can do that for next year, through addition through subtraction. I have some ideas. I'd like to hire a data, an assessment and data coach that would actually work K-12 with the classroom teachers on what all this data collection is all about, and how do, and what these assessments mean, and what the information means for their teaching. I'd like to reconfigure the middle school schedule to allow more time for mathematics and language arts. One of the reasons that I believe our MCAS math scores are low is we are not, the program that we're trying to, that we have adopted calls for 60 minutes of mathematics a day. The way the schedule works at the middle school, we have about 44 minutes.
Forty-nine, and then by the time you get to passing time.
Yeah, so 44 minutes of instruction in the major content areas, and that is just not enough. I think we are not doing our students, we're doing our students a disservice by not providing them with the 60 minutes each day of the major areas. So we have a group that's going to be working right after the new year on that one. I challenged the middle school. I'd love to eliminate one period, extend the others, and have some creative ways of using the staff that I think would be more supportive of our students. of our students. And lastly, I'd like to add a point-two library media coordinator. We do not have a K-12 library media coordinator in the system, and I believe that libraries are going to be taking on a different, but more important role in every one of our schools. We are automating all the libraries this year, we need someone to lead the charge. And I believe we have someone in the system that could do it, who's not working full-time. So I'm looking to, for a point-two library media. Lastly, I just want to say this, this budget is not my budget, this budget is their budget. It's recommendations from each of the schools about what they think is most important for our students today. I'm truly blessed to have a leadership team that really thinks outside of the box and really cares about what I believe is the most important interaction, and the most important thing that you pay for in this budget, and that's the interaction between the student and the teacher. And all that their request and work that they're trying to do is to provide the best we can for the teacher and the student. So tonight is a preliminary one, look, we will be coming back on, Paul and I on the 13th with a more final number, but hopefully, without taking any of those wonderful ideas out of the budget, which we think we can do. Thank you.
[Music] I'd just like to take this opportunity, in addition to thanking the leadership team, I'm not sure that the town knows over the last, since last May, how much work Mrs. Benton has done, particularly for this new high school, the number of meetings that she attended, and Mr. Rogiro, I'll add you into it because he attended right along with her on many of them, they were still able to do their work. The fact that you could have such a budget presentation for us tonight is so impressive to me, and I'm sure the rest of this committee would agree with me, how really grateful we are that you are able to keep up the amount of work and attend probably, I know at least 24, and add another few in there for weeks, at least 34 or 50, I bet, did you have a count?
No, don't want to.
Don't want to know. Meetings in Boston during the school day, it was, it's incredible to think that we have a superintendent who would give this to that community, and I really want to thank her and give you a round of applause for all the work that you have done.
Thank you.
And Mr. Rogiro gets a round of applause, too. It's amazing, we take it for granted, we just take it for granted. Talk about going above and beyond the work that we've hired the people to do, it's incredible, and so just thank you so much, we can't thank you enough.
Thanks.
All right.
Can I add another?
Yes. Go ahead, yeah.
Just add one more item this evening, sort of another unfunded mandate, but one that we have to take care of, and that is, on July 19, 2010, the governor signed into law an Act Relative to Safety Regulations for School Athletic Programs. And the law said that by January 1, while school committees needed to ensure that the Department of Public Health received an affirmation on school district led ahead, saying that we all developed district policies around athletic concussions, around concussions. Now unfortunately, we did not receive the model of the policy till three days ago. So the good news is, our athletic, head of athletics, Ed Harrison, and Doreen Crowe, and Kate Dougherty, were already working on concussion guidelines. So what you have in front of you is the athletic concussion policy recommended by MASCE, the athletic concussion regulations that came from MASCE, and lastly, the important work, which is the Wilmington Public Schools Concussion Management Guidelines. At January 13, we'll come back to you for a second reading of this policy. As I said, it's very frustrating when the state gives you a mandate, they tell you that they're going to send you something, a policy, sample policy to work out, and they send it on the 9th of December. So I just wanted to, we will be covered in having you all have this in your hands tonight so we can report to the DPH.
Excellent, do we have any comments?
I share Superintendent Benton's frustrations.
Yes, it was going to go before our policy subcommittee, but Robert and I, in the last two days, did not have time to meet as a subcommittee, and we're on a time constraint, so we don't have another meeting before January 1. So this seemed the best way to handle it, and so we thank you for getting this report for us.
I thank Mr. Harrison.
Mr. Harrison, thank you. Could I just add, I want to go back to the budget for one minute, I'm not sure we were clear to the school committee, I just want to make sure, if you have anything from the budget book that you would like to go, or this presentation, could you email to the Roman House, and they'll have the answers for us the next time that we meet?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be really helpful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just for the community's sake, they did receive this, this is the budget.
It's interesting reading, talk about nighttime reading, takes weeks, I don't know how they do it. It's excellent. Okay, delegations. Other reports, subcommittee reports, we'll do Mr. Hayes first, then I have some.
Sure. I just wanted to say briefly that I attended the Massachusetts Association of School Committee Conference a few weeks ago, and I was our delegate to the assembly, and just as an update, all the, all the articles did pass, including the one that we were not in favor of, the one regarding, you know, vocational, technical schools, and them being, you know, us having to transport them for tours and things like that. But aside from that, everything, the assembly went very well, but I did, I did want to say that I actually got to meet, what's the gentleman's name, Tony Wagner, closing the Global Achievement App, so you had referenced him in your, in your report, and just three things that he recommended to all school committee members. Number one, hold ourselves accountable for what matters most. He suggests tracking the cohort graduation rate and how students do once they are in college, which is something we had actually talked about at a prior meeting. He had suggested going to studentclearinghouse.org and paying the $425 annual fee, and that would help us in this process. Hopefully, that, hopefully they weren't funding his talk, I don't know. He says, "Use the college and work readiness assessment to assess analytic reasoning, critical thinking, problem solving, and writing," and I can get you that website. And then also, videotape focus groups with recent graduates and current college students, which is again, something else we had talked about. Number two, he said, "Do the new work," so teaching and assessing in the skills that are most important. So he suggested piloting interdisciplinary courses around essential questions. He recommended capstone projects for 5th, 8th, and 12th graders, and also districts should have a line item in their budget for research and development. He also says, he would require all students to have digital portfolios, work internships, and participate in service learning projects. And he also made a reference to Tufts, who I guess requires their, their admission, their, the students who are interested in applying to submit a YouTube video, I guess that's part of the requirements now.
Is that on the application?
That's very interesting.
Oh, that's great.
And then the third, the third and final thing that he had mentioned was, isolation is the enemy of improvement. So every student should have an adult advocate, videotape, teachers, with their permission, obviously, should be videotaped and supervised, every teacher should be on teams, and emphasis on collaborative inquiry, and finally, teachers should have peer-reviewed digital portfolios as well. So those were sort of three of the, he talked about accountability 2.0, and those were sort of the three things that he hit on in that portion of the project, that portion of his talk, and I wanted to bring that back to share with the committee. And the other news I have is that I've been elected as the secretary slash treasurer of Division I of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. I'm, I have some big shoes to fill, I'm following in the footsteps of a legend over there, but I look forward to it, and, and one positive that this will bring to the entire committee is that I will be able to network with other nearby school committee members, and will be able to maybe get some ideas from other districts, so.
Great.
And that's, that's it, and I can also say that the Anti-Bullying Committee will be meeting sometime in early January, and I know the Technology Task Force meeting, Task Force Committee will be meeting sometime in early February.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Dr. Quick was unable to stay at our, to our meeting tonight, but she had two meetings that she wanted to report on, two sessions. One was the Wilmington Education Foundation, who met on 12/13. Recognize an educator who has enriched your child's life and support our schools by giving a teacher tribute donation to the WEF in that teacher's name. Donations and forms are due by 12/16. You can go to the WEF homepage link on the Wilmington K-12 site to download the form. There is a vendor fair in the initial planning, the date is set for March 30 at the Knights of Columbus. The Academy of the Traditional School of Karate Program, to begin with the percentage of enrollment fees to go to WEF. WEF wants to thank Staples for a $2,000 donation to our schools, thanks to the Deorios who got us the donation. Wow, this is getting even more impressive. WEF Walk raised $17,349. That's incredible. Dates to remember, the curriculum grant requests for proposals will be sent on January 3. The deadline for proposals is January 31. Educational Explorers, RFPs, are February 14, and the deadline for proposals, March 15. And a technology grant, RFP, March 1, deadline April 2. WEF is looking to come up with a grant that doesn't fit within the confines of the aforementioned grants. More to come in 2012. Wow, excellent work, behalf of the system, for the WEF, Wilmington Education Foundation, so thank you so much. The second one is, also accolades here, the school's health and wellness committee met on November 16. The West and the North Intermediate Schools received bronze medals, school wellness awards, given by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. This award recognizes and honors public schools that support and promote healthy eating, physical activity, and tobacco-free lifestyles among students and staff. Some of the criteria for the reward, the award were, physical education as a required subject in all grades, comprehensive health education, an ongoing wellness committee or like group that helps plan, implement, and monitor school health programs that meets at least twice a year. The school has written local wellness policies that includes goals for nutrition, education, physical activity, and wellness programs, as well as nutrition guidelines for food distributed at the schools. The school has a written, comprehensive, tobacco-free policy. A representative from the DPH and DESE presented award banners to the schools to be displayed. Award press releases were sent to local media, and the winning coaches are or were featured on the ESE and DPH websites. So congratulations to our health and wellness caretakers in our school system, that's very much of an honor. Thank you so much. Okay, do we have any other, any other reports of communities? Mr. Veil?
I'll report that we've had now two meetings of the calendaring subcommittee, we had one just earlier this week, this was this week, and, it's Monday, and about five weeks ago. I think we've put together a really top-notch task force of educators and principals and folks from the community, Sister Superintendent Burnham has been a huge help in keeping minutes, and agendas, and a bunch of other things. A lot of information is being collected at the moment, such a broad-based topic that at the first meeting, we decided that it would be most useful to really focus on the school schedule, daily, like the daily schedule, opening and closing times, as opposed to trying to look at the overall, the annual calendar, but where, there were a lot of information and studies, and other documents distributed and disseminated recently that looked at appropriate start times for the children based on age, and the best available techn, science as to learning habits of students at various age groups, and developing teenage brains, and all that. So this is a very wide-ranging inquiry at the moment, obviously, any changes have many knock-on impacts because everything is so interwoven and interrelated, it's like you start to tug on one strand, and this whole tapestry begins to unwind. So we're going to go slowly, but we're looking into it, and there'll be more inquiries and some surveys probably, as we collect information concerning all of the implications of any recommendations, and then obviously, it'll come back to the community and the wider community for any further actions, but it's a very interesting process, and I think we're off to a great start.
Great, thank you, Mr. Veil. Excellent. Any other, no? Okay, correspondence.
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Future meeting dates and agenda items, January 11, 2012?
We will be doing the program of studies for the high school, the first reading of that presentation, as well as the budget and the athletic concussion policy.
And then we should keep in mind that normally, the town manager's talk, which we all, we attend, his budget presentation's normally at the end of January.
So last Monday in January.
Last Monday in January, so we're not sure that that would be the case this year, but keep it on our calendars open, okay, so that would be good. Okay, do we have any other items, or? Everybody, hope we have a wonderful holiday, holiday season for everybody, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Mr. Hayes, thank you. Second, Mr. Veil, all those in favor? You and Anna Westlinda, thank you so much. Happy holidays, everybody.